This morning. I was amazed that the world is-
White pines will come right to you and do all that.
I ju- I went there. We only have two.
All right, Madam Mayor, it's nine oh one and we are live.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the city of Lake Worth Beach Agenda Meeting for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Maliga.
Present.
Commissioner Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
I'm here.
Commissioner Reynaldo Diaz.
Here.
Oh, you do. Let's start with the agenda. And I think it'd be, it's a good opportunity for us to talk more about the CBGB funds that we're gonna be voting on on Tuesday. Which is item number unfinished business A. We had some good discussions about, you know, how to do it. What's, what's everybody's feelings about it right now? About which way to go?
Uh, I think that even though I brought forward the Tropical Park, I think the Tropical Ridge Park, I think that everybody made some good points in regards to, you know, what do we want to put there? Do, does the community want more, you know, exercise equipment? What is really the plan? And maybe we should wait till the mask, the green space master plan. Um, so I am in favor of listening to the community and doing the gymnasium and finishing the roof at the Osborne Community, given all the money we've put into the building. We don't want the roof to fall in and ruin the damage or damage what we've done.
Okay, Jamie, in the meantime, if we don't put any money in the CBGB fund, is there anything that we can do to get some lights, you know, improve it somehow that it gets a little more use and that it, um, you know?
You said if we don't put any money into the CD BG fund, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um, you're driving. Um, no, what I'm saying is if, you know, if we go with the, with the Osborne and the gym and not the, not the little park there, is there anything that, do we have any money in the budget that we can do something there?
That's what you were saying. Now you said if we don't choose the park as the CD BG, one of the projects.
Yes, if we do, if, if we do not choose the park.
Yeah.
If we do, Buck, is there something that we can do to improve?
Yeah, I can get with, uh, with Chris Hana and Tiana over in Leisure and see what, uh, what possible, um, improvements can be done there for hopefully not a lot of money. If this is gonna be something in the future we're looking at, especially using grant funding on, we won't want to spend, uh, operational funds if we don't have to. So we can see what, what possibly we done there.
Even lighting, I think that's maybe one of the issues. Um, okay, so, so Sarah, you're with the gym and the Osborne Center.
After listening to everybody, yes.
Okay, it was a good discussion the other night. Uh, Chris, what's your thoughts on that?
Um, I guess I would have some hesitation to putting all our eggs into the one basket. I did not hear from Jamie that the roof is in any danger of falling in, uh, imminently. Um, sounded like it would do fine for another several years, um, or maybe more, I don't know. Uh, so I would say a little more energy into the Tropical Ridge Park, I think would be useful.
Okay, Jamie, what about the roof on the, uh?
Roof on the Osborne? Yeah, the roof on the Osborne definitely needs to be done. The roof on the gym, we have a couple more years. We can get away with not doing the roof on the gym. And that's-
Well, well, wait, I, I isn't the, is the roof is for the Osborne Center? And the gym money, the gym money I thought was for like the kind of thing we did for the Osborne, you know, upgrading the AC and the-
Correct, and there's, um, there, there are multiple things within the gym, a bath, restrooms, a lot of different things. So, so that project is multiple, multiple things for the gym itself. But there was mentioned at one point in time of the roof as well, but I'm just saying we do not have to do the roof on the gym right now. So that would be everything else mentioned in that staff report for the gym.
Okay, but the roof on the Osborne Center, is that more critical?
Yes, that needs to be done.
Um, Mimi.
And also, Madam Mayor, the, uh, that survey is still up on the website as well, um, for people in the public to actually vote, so.
Have we had much of a response, do you know? Has anyone checked?
I, I can follow up with, with Tiana, but it sounds like a lot of people were, were voting, but we'll get the actual numbers and everything, though.
Okay, okay. So, Chris, you would rather do the park?
Uh, I thought that what we had talked about was some going to the Osborne area and some going to the Tropical Ridge. We had two, two sets of funds this year, um, in, on the order of three hundred thousand. Each was my recollection, and I would suggest doing one, one down there and one to the Tropical Ridge.
Yeah, the, it's funny, because I still think of the gym as the new gym, but I guess it's been there about twenty years now. At least, so, um. Okay, so you'd rather put the money in the tropical, in the, in the Tropical Ridge Park?
Uh, that's not what I said. I said there are two sets of money, one to Tropical Ridge, one to the other.
Right. Well, the items that we were presented with was the, the exercise, the fitness park behind Compass?
Yes, that's the Tropical Ridge one.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm asking you. So you're, you're, you would tend more to go towards the Tropical Ridge and what else?
The other, but there's, there's two sets of three hundred thousand approximately. Put one to the Tropical Ridge and one to the items that are, have already been discussed, uh, it, and in the Osborne Community.
Okay, well, we have, there's the, there's the roof on the Osborne Center, the gym upgrades, and then there's that Greenway, the Fifteenth Avenue South Greenway, which we really didn't talk about much.
Yeah, I think that, so you're between the Osborne Community Center, Commissioner McVoy, and the Gymnasium, one of the two. Pick one of those is what you're saying.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, I'll defer to staff or to others as to which one, just out of the roughly six hundred thousand, use half of it at, at Tropical Ridge and the other half of it, uh, as people see wisest or most urgent or whatever, uh.
Right, Mimi, thank you, thank you, Chris. Mimi?
Center is okay for, but, oh, sorry, I'm not muted. If the roof on the Osborne Center is okay, um, I was talking to the president of Tropical Ridge and they are really interested in, um, updating that fitness park and they, they do want it as a fitness park, and I believe they're gonna come speak at the meeting, that's what they said. Their, um, monthly meeting is at Compass on Monday night, so I'm sure they'll solidify their plans for that. Um, and so, of course, I want to listen to the community on, on that, um, then, and I also think that the gym absolutely needs to, needs to get its update. So those will be my two, but I'm, I'm waiting to hear more from the survey and waiting to hear more from the neighbors.
And did you hear that they're not using it because it's a mess or they're not use, or, I mean, does it get much, doesn't really get much use, I guess would be the question?
I don't know that it's, I, I haven't been there and I'm gonna go there tonight. Um, I don't know if it's, not tonight, tomorrow. Um, I don't know how safe it is, so I, I don't know. I want to go check it out myself.
It, it does get quite a bit of use.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, and, and I know that the, they said that the playground equipment for the kids' stuff isn't that bad, but it could use a shade over it. But, so we, I don't, I'm gonna go look at there tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Reynaldo, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I pretty much agree with all of that. I think the, to Commissioner McVoy's question or point, one of the things that we talked about was at the meeting, how much does the roof actually cost for the community center? Um, because it might not be the entire three fifty, and how much does the gymnasium cost? And like, was there an opportunity to kind of do both or as much of both as possible? But either way, I definitely lean towards, I mean, a roof at the community center needs to be done because we, we you know, it's like when I, when I fix a, when I fix a car, you know, I like to do it all complete. I don't do ninety percent of the work and then leave the last ten percent. Um, so I'd, I feel like we need to do that. And in terms of the gym, even if there is a couple of years, I think there was, uh, a thought of, well, we could apply for the next CD GB, but, um, but I'm not, I'm not confident that this grant will exist in future years, let's put it that way. So I would say like, we need to do that. It may not be an emergency now, but it might be in the next year or two, especially that air conditioner. We've been looking at it for so long, so. And for the park, I mean, I think there are, I hope we're having that conversation with, uh, like Compass and others that we said of maybe finding a, a partner that, that can have a a presence in that park so that it gets a more appropriate use.
Okay, thank you. Jamie, have we any idea how much the roof of the Osborne Center would actually cost? You're muted, if you care. No?
I'm guessing he's probably in the midst.
I was trying to unmute. Um, no, we do not have a, um, estimate yet as far as, uh, the probable cost for that, but I did pull up on my phone here, the, uh, so we have six items on here, because we had the, um, roof assessments done for some of our city facilities. Um, full replacement, um, is needed right now for the golf clubhouse, pro shop and cart barn. We have five plus years on, uh, well, let's see, three to five years on the, um, Wimley Gymnasium. Osborne, we need to be doing a full replacement now. Um, CDC, we're doing, uh, we got about a, a little over a year left on that one. Um, and nineteen hundred, um, needs to be done as well. So those are the assessments that we've gotten, uh, as of about a month ago.
So is anybody gonna go to the Tropical Ridge meeting on Monday night?
I am.
You are?
Yeah.
Great, so you'll, where are you? Um, that other, I'm sorry.
I don't know where I am.
I don't know where you are, you're San Francisco. Um, okay, great, well, that'll get some feedback then from the, uh, yeah, I mean, and I'm open to whatever, you know, that we, we need all of them, so.
Can I ask a que- can I ask a question about the funding? Um, do you have to keep the three hundred thousand, the two, the two things of three hundred thousand separate and only apply them to one project? Or can you take the seven hundred thousand and look to do three projects?
Two only.
You can only do two.
Can you count the Osborne roof and the gym as a campus?
It's per parcels, what Jerry said last week.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one, one, one idea just to throw out there as a reminder, uh, and maybe Jamie can confirm this. And so, Mimi, when you go to this, uh, meeting, I, I believe we do have a small set of skate park equipment that had been ordered years ago and is, uh, not being used. Is that right, Jamie?
Well, EMS will be close if they get hurt.
Yes, that is correct. That was ordered by our previous, uh, Leisure Services Director, um, left, left the city.
Yeah. So it's an option.
Is, is a park big enough for that sort of thing?
Yeah, because they're like configurable, it's like the metal type things that you build and it would need, you know, a, a concrete slab poured down for sure, but um, it, it's an option. That might be a, a low cost thing that we already have and can deploy, uh, if, if the community is interested.
I'll see what they say. I'll bring that tomorrow, I'll see what they say.
And as part of the CDBG process, we do have to have community meetings as well, so we would have to meet with that entire, um, community anyway, um, to get all of their input prior to selecting what that actual project would all consist of.
Oh, so if we say we want to do the Tropical Ridge Park, we don't have to decide exactly what we need to put in it until we get those community meetings?
Correct, because part of that CDBG process, you have to have those community meetings.
Okay, so Reynaldo, we can even hold off on that part for, for now, but I will, I'm sure somebody from Tropical Ridge is watching this right now and we will bring it up, but that'll be, that's good to know that we don't have to make the exact plan before we choose them as a project winner, for lack of a better word.
Um. Okay. And that is a very light agenda this, this week. Um, the only other thing is the, um, the professional services for Public Works. And Jamie, is there anything that we should know ahead of time about that, or is that just pretty straightforward?
The, the never ending project.
The never ending project.
So, yeah, it kind of, uh, we explained it in the, in the item, but, uh, yeah, obviously this has been going on for quite a while and, um, there, you know, issues beyond our control have happened time and time again, but the last one being that, uh, you know, the Architect of Record who actually did the construction drawings. Luckily, we got through the construction phase, um, before they went out of business, because if that happened in the middle, um, we would have to start over with something completely different. But we had to bring someone else on board, um, to basically take on the Architect of Record, uh, title and take on all the liability and everything else, so that's what that legit item is. So we can, uh, get those plans basically confirmed and then get this thing put out to bid. And obviously, I mentioned before, my, my concern is with everything going on right now, talk tariffs and twenty-five percent increases on aluminum steel, it's little, a little nerve wracking, uh, but, you know, we, we push forward and we'll see what, uh, we'll see what happens.
Okay, Chris, is that a comment on that item?
No, I have my-
Yeah, I have something, I'm gonna start. We all have some things we want to bring forward, so, um, I'm gonna start just with a couple ci- city things, a couple of things. Jamie, real quick, do we, we have the, um, what's the status of the photographs that we had framed, that we're having framed for City Hall, the big postcards?
We just talked about that in my, uh, meeting yesterday. Everything's all done. They're at City Hall. It's just a matter of now, uh, getting to, getting those things up. Um, so they finished up HR, they finished up finance, because our, our facility staff's been pretty busy with all these, uh, facilities projects citywide. But now they're, they're getting to a point where we can get, get those things hung up, so.
Okay, great, great, great.
But they are, they are back in our possession and they look really good.
I'm looking forward to it. It's gonna be nice, it's gonna be a good look. Um, Melissa, this is a silly question. A man, I, I lost the man's name and card. There's a guy that has come to us a couple of times about the lady feeding the pigeons by their condo, and I don't remember where they are. If you, not right now, because I know we're in the middle of this, but if you could at some point turn me on to where, where that was, it was like Ninth Avenue South or something.
I have, I have an update on that.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, so I, I, I've worked with those condo owners closely on this and, um, thank you to Captain Karn for helping out, but uh, the short version is that people haven't come back and dumped the corn in the alley and the pigeons have gone away because, uh, PBSO was able to cite that couple with, uh, there's a state statute against feeding wildlife, and so that, that has been taken care of.
I, you know what? Thank you for, I had no idea. See, we, a lot of times we don't know what the other one, one hand doesn't know what the other one's doing, but thank you for reaching out, because I had that blue card and I somehow lost it in my bottom of the black bag. Um, I have met with a, a resident who's got an issue with, you know, we have the vacant lot, there's a bigger issue with the vacant lots, but one of the things that I'd like to sort of chunk off of it and, and address is, he has, um, how, he's got three lots. His house is in the middle lot. And apparently, we're trying to ding him for vacant lots on either side, I mean, of his house. So my feeling is if, if, if there's a lot adjacent to property that you own, you know, if it's not a standing like in the middle of a block, an empty lot, it, but it's adjacent contiguous to your own, um, lot, apparently he was told will have a, nearly a title for them. Well, that, that's not really necessary. So I would like to propose that we change the ordinance to, um, eliminate, you know, if, to add a thing that if it's adjacent to, you know, of your house, you know, your yard, then you would not get dinged for an empty lot. Uh, what's, what's people's thoughts? Anybody have any thoughts on that? It just seems unfair.
Um, I, I do have thoughts. I also have received input from residents. I, I, I think that's one aspect of the vacant land registry that we need to revisit, but I think the whole thing needs to be looked at carefully, that we look at what is the purpose? I know, we know something about the history, that it was a company that kind of sold us on the idea a long time ago.
No, I, I said, that's, Chris, what I don't mean to interrupt, but I did say it's a bigger picture, but I would like, there's a, there's a real immediate fix that we could do about somebody that's, you know, a couple of people that are having an issue. I'd like to just do that as a quick fix.
I don't, I don't think we ought to do it, but you did interrupt me. I, I don't think we should do it piecemeal. I think that we should look at that program and figure out, is this program in fact doing us any good? What is the objective? And is it fair to people who own vacant lots? Um, I think it needs to be looked at. Uh, yes, one piece of it, of people that are adjacent to a home is certainly worth looking at, but I would look at the whole picture.
Well, I, I don't disagree with you. I just, we got a lot going on right now and we, um, that's just something I think we can, um, you know, kind of quickly address. Uh, Reynaldo?
Yeah, um.
This is right in your name.
That's my neighbor, yeah.
You know who I'm talking about.
Yep, I know who you're talking about, my neighbor. Uh, I know him well. Um, yeah, you know, the unity of title thing is, is specifically for, I always envision it as if you were gonna, you have three lots and you were gonna, you wanted to build something that's gonna cover the three lots, so like, it's disappointing to hear that that was suggested to him. There's other ways, but I, I agree. I think that's an easy fix. The fee schedule thing, I think we, we addressed, uh, uh, in a way, or I think we need to revisit that, but I, I definitely agree with Commissioner McVoy's thoughts on, uh, we really need to take a holistic look at some point, because we, we have an issue certainly with, um, let's just call them like the real estate speculators. There's a lot of vacant properties, whether they're built on or just lots that I feel there is a lot that can be done with.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I would like to bring this forward, though, you know, just to really, and you know what I'm talking about, just to alleviate that one piece of it. Do you have an objection if we do that? Just with the agreement that we're gonna look at other things? Do you have an objection to having it just have that little amendment done? And I'm-
No, not, not at all.
Okay, Sarah? Your thoughts?
Yes, ma'am, I'm in agreeance, um, to, I mean, if we can help one resident right now, but take a look at the whole thing, I think it's important. Um, I'm one of the ones who advocates for the vacant registry, because unfortunately, in my district, I have a ton of dumping on empty lots. And, um, it, it, we, we need to figure out how to secure these lots, so we don't keep doing whack a mole, but I think we need to look at, you know, from, from a whole policy. I do believe that we need to help this resident as soon as possible, but my hand was up, um, for some issues that I need to have you guys give me consensus.
No, I, right, but I'm just, I'm just going around the group. Um, but would you, would you object if we just did that one quick fix with the idea that we're gonna look at the bigger picture?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mimi?
Uh, excuse me, uh, yeah, I'm okay with that, as long as they're caring for the lots as if it was extra prop- property of their own.
Well, I mean, it's right, yeah.
I mean, I, I had, I had that situation when in my old house, I owned both the lots together. I quit claimed them for ten, I quit claimed them to myself and it became one lot and it was easy to separate, to sell. So that's another option, but, you know, it doesn't really, if they're attached that to their primary dwelling and not a rental property, that's fine. It has to be a homesteaded property, though.
So you'd want the homestead, okay.
Yeah, I want it where they're there and they can watch.
Okay, William, Mr. Waters? Would that be complicated to do?
Um, I don't think so. I'll get with Elizabeth to see how it's written. Uh, William Waters, Community Sustainability Director. I don't think that it would be that difficult to add a couple of lines in some place that would describe the two, um, options that you all are discussing, on the properties being adjacent to one that's already, one that does not qualify to be considered vacant, and also what Commissioner May brought up as being, they're being homesteaded.
Thank you. So, um, well, I've, so that I have consensus, we'll go ahead and work on that as well. Okay, thank you. Um. Oh, before I forget, and we're gonna have to say this publicly and in many different ways, the staff, the, um,
Oh, yes.
The street planting festival was an insane success. It was wonderful. People felt secure. Those little sidewalk barriers were great. Um, it was, it was, it was just wonderful. So I just want to kudos to the staff that actually isn't here, but we have to get word to them how much we appreciate what they did. And I think that company, you know, we'll have, we'll have to get like a wrap up of it, but it seems like they did a good job. Um, okay, uh, Chris?
Yeah, thank you. I have several items that I need some consensus from my colleagues on.
Wait, I, what? Oh, I'm sorry. I had my hand up first.
All right, all right, apologies. Sarah, then we'll go to Sarah.
Thank you. Um, I, I just, I got on early and put my hand up. Um, there's a couple of things that I would like consensus on. One, I think we all remember the horrific human trafficking situation that happened a couple of weeks ago. I would like to bring in Deputy Smith, Deputy Williams and Deputy Amidon and give them, um, a hero coin from the city of Lake Worth Beach and honor them for their due diligence in rescuing um, the victims of that situation and getting two, two bad people off of our streets, and I need consensus to put that on the agenda.
You got it for me?
Fine for me.
That's fine.
Reynaldo?
Yeah, that, I'm okay with that.
Okay, another one is, um, memorial tree planting. Um, Compass would like to plant a tree in memory of Isabella Mayo, who was a, a member of the community, um, at Compass for volunteer, unfortunately lost to, um, suicide two years ago. And they would like to do a tree planting in Bryant Park, and I just wanted to make sure that the, the commission didn't have an issue with that. They will pay for the tree. They just want to make sure that they can put a memorial, um, plaque or something by the tree.
Will they water it?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, who's watering the other ones that are just planted at Bryant Park?
Volunteers.
Okay, well then, yeah, I'm sure they will, but that, we can work out that logistic with Compass.
Well, well, I wonder what volunteers are just fit, because there was an issue with volunteers. Um, Jamie, you know more about that. Um, but who's actually doing that now? Is it still, um, Jamie, I see your hand is up. It doesn't-
Yes, um, I mean, I guess this brings up a, a good question, because under a, a previous, uh, administration, um, you know, decision had been made that, that the city was not going to be doing any more, um, you know, we had done memorial benches, memorial trees, or just kind of like memorial things kind of throughout the city. There's stuff at City Hall, there's stuff in Bryant Park. Um, there's stuff kind of all over, um, but we, we still get requests pretty often for different things. Um, and we've kind of still been operating under, under that, that adage that we weren't really doing memorial things for people, because we do offer the, um, the brick pavers that people can purchase through the clerk's office for the, um, the cultural plaza. If you wanted to do like a memorial or in memory of, of, of someone and, uh, purchase one of those bricks, they get engraved and then installed in the cultural plaza. But as far as all the other things, because we were getting inundated, and, um, I, I know one of the directions before was, you know, there, there are ways on, on people's private property, they can memorialize, um, relatives or something like that, but we, we kind of got to a point where we didn't really know what to do with all these requests.
Well, Compass doesn't have private property. They rent from the city.
They can do a paper.
I thought, I thought they, I thought we had a naming policy that was gonna be brought forward years ago when Juan was here. I, I never have, I've never seen that.
And, and none of us really, I mean, I love Joanne Golden very much, but how did that ever happen? That never came to us, that I-
And there was money spent on it.
And I was surprised, because I knew that there was a policy not to do that.
So, I mean, I think that, I hear what you're saying, Jamie, when it comes to benches and things like that, but, you know, trees, you know, if somebody wants to pay to plant a tree and we're trying to be, have a tree canopy and a memorial plaque, I mean, I just, I'm just asking for consensus or-
Yeah, just like the one at the cultural plaza, because what's happened in the past, it hasn't just been a tree that someone's asked for. It's like a tree, but they also want to put like a large plaque or something in front of it. Um, so the exception was kind of if it was someone who was, uh, you know, like a founder of the city or had something like a former commissioner or something like that, but again, this is just one of those things that if we're gonna kind of open it up, we just need to make sure that we, we have a policy in place, so it's consistent across the board. So when we get all these calls for people that, you know, my uncle passed and, um, he lived here for, you know, twenty years. Um, I want to, you know, put a plaque, you know, right outside of City Hall or something like that, you know? We just need to make sure that if, if that's what we're gonna do, that we're consistent across the board, so we're not telling some people yes and other people no. And not really having a reason as to why we're saying yes or no, or what we're gonna be doing.
Yeah, years ago, we planted a magnolia tree by the library for my mom and it died. I mean, so it was like, you know, what happens if the tree dies, that sort of stuff. Um, maybe this will be just, um, another discussion. Um, Reynaldo, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, um. This one's tough for me, because Bella was a friend of mine, um, but, um, did they, did Compass want to propose a plaque or was it just a, a tree? That was my first question.
They just asked for a tree to be planted.
Yeah, I mean, if it's just the tree, uh, I don't see an issue with it. I'm sure I can get, uh, members of the, our friend group to commit to watering it, um, but I would be, I would be behind us for sure, if, especially if it's just a pre, I, I, I mean, I, I definitely understand the concerns about not wanting like plaques everywhere, so I, I can certainly understand that part of it.
Mimi?
I was just thinking, um, we're talking about Tropical Ridge, which is right across the street from Compass, so you could do the, um, tree there.
That's not a bad idea.
That could be a good idea. But there's absolutely no watering there, so, and that would be closer for them just to go over there and water it.
Yeah, Chris? You have a thought on the tree?
Uh, I, I'm not crazy about bureaucratic processes. Uh, I, I'm not crazy about bureaucratic processes, but um, and I've had discussions with Jamie recently on speed bumps that I get a lot of requests for.
Yeah, a lot.
And, and I, I hear Jamie's logic that there, we probably need to have some sort of a process, because you know, there's pros and cons to various of these things. Um, uh, I guess I would agree with the statement that if somebody's just planting a tree and there isn't any plaque, um, fine, if, if, and it i- i- if there is a plaque, then we probably need to make sure that we look at our policy and figure out something that seems pretty even-handed and and meets all our objectives um before we move forward on it, if it's not, you know, immediately urgent.
Thanks. Ronaldo, did you want to say anything else?
Yeah, and in terms of the location, I would suspect Bryant Park is the choice for Bella because of the amount of time that she spent there uh, with friends. So, you know, that would be a, like a meaningful place for it.
Okay, so, so it's, so we don't have a decision. We have a conversation. I guess we would reach out to Julie and see if they wanted to, you know, whether did they wanna, you know, what did they want?
I'll reach out, it's Adrian who reached out to me, so I'll talk to Adrian.
And then, I, yeah, I wrote back, I guess I responded to Julie that, you know, we weren't sure what was happening with it. Um,
And then my, my last thing for consensus would be, um, even though Street Painting Festival was very successful, um, there were some unscrupulous things happening at one of the vape shops on Lake Avenue. Um, I brought a sample of the item to Jamie. Um, I would like to have a conversation on putting a moratorium on cough, cava shops in our city as well as vape shops. Right now, we have more than even staff knows what we have, which is more concerning to me, the fact that they're not categorized as a vape shop. Um, this particular shop not only has had a sandwich sign out front with a marijuana leaf on it um for the last couple of weeks, but they were actually giving away cannabis drinks and cookies that had no labels on them, no ingredients. And I, you know, I was dressed regularly and I said, oh my gosh, this is, this is cannabis. And she's like, yeah, she's like, and it's really good, it's got a good THC level. I said, really? I said, because I'm the vice mayor and we only have two medical marijuana facilities. And she's like, no, 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 it's just, it's not cannabis, we just call it. Backed up and I was lit. Uh, you know, we've got little kids walking around.
Crazy, that's crazy.
People who are in recovery and they're giving away these little bags of chocolate chip munchy cookies. And this, this company was closed down in Fort Lauderdale. Um, and you know, we're really trying to move our city, you know, in a, in a positive, healthy attribute. And with all the recovery people we have here, I do not think that we need any more cava bars. I don't think we need any more vape shops. And I'd really like us to have a hard conversation on putting a moratorium on these things, because we're only seven square miles.
Yeah, no, I, I, what, um, let's just go down the road. Chris, what's your thoughts on that?
Uh, putting it on as a discussion item, sounds like a real good idea.
Do you have any thoughts about it?
Let's put it on as a discussion item.
Okay, Mimi?
Um, I agree, because now there's another one in the old um leather shop too.
Correct. If that doesn't have it categorized as a cava shop, but it's categorized as like a cafe, and I'm like, no, that's crap.
No, that's a vape shop, and it says on the front, vape shop.
Shop in big letters. I reported them to code, because they don't have any permits for those neon flashing signs.
Oh, and those are noxious.
I hate them. Ronaldo?
Um, I think I heard there's another one coming to the acorn, old acorn locksmith spot.
Oh no!
Um, thanks for bringing this up, because when we talked about the dispensary ordinance, I had brought this up as uh, a pressing need, because the, the vape shop, the um, I don't know what you would call them, the, the smoke shops, if you will, the paraphernalia shops, they're like popping up left and right. Cause you know, I made it a point then that I feel like the dispensaries are almost self-regulating. There's only so many of those companies that exist. Uh, but the, the accessories, if you will, are just popping up everywhere. And I, I had brought it up in terms of maybe not necessarily a moratorium, but a distance requirement, but you know, I definitely wanna discuss it and see what options are out there, because it's um, it certainly is problematic. And hearing about even, you know, whether or not it has THC, like, yeah, uh unlabeled, I mean, there's, there's very clearly very strict laws about it, so.
Yeah, really.
Um, yeah.
Jamie, I said, when you walk around as the vice mayor, you look at, you know, you're more focused on that than really enjoying the activity, because I was, I was pissed. I'm like, you know what? I'm like, this is not cool. And the fact that
Did they take them in?
They're popping up all over town and they're not categorized as a vape shop. It's like, I can apply for anything, just check a box and then open whatever I want. And I'm like, that, there's, there's no control over it.
Okay, so now do we need a workshop for this, or do we think we're gonna do it as an agenda item?
I think that, I asked Mr.
I guess the question would be, is there consensus here to have staff?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, hundred percent.
Staff legal, let's, let's see what they can do. We need a strict policy.
I also asked Mr. Waters if he could find, finite the actual number that are licensed or are operating in the city for cava as well as vape and smoke shops.
And, and to add to that, um, maybe for that discussion, whether it's discussion or workshop, I'm, you know, whichever one. Um, but to bring us, what are our legal possibilities? Is density, distance proximity? Yeah, are those options? Do we, can we regulate just the total number? What are our regulable options?
Right.
Again, yeah, okay.
Thank, thank you guys. I truly appreciate you. Um, this is, like I said, it's just something that I, I think that we need to get ahead of um before, you know, more people start coming in. It's just a free
No, it's, it's, and it's, it just looks cheap and crappy on Lake Avenue. Um, okay, so Chris?
I love that you're subtle in your comments. I love it. You said what I was thinking two days ago.
I, I have to, I'm, I, and that even, that's with some self-editing, so I'm from Jersey, what can I tell you? I was raised in the city.
You said, Chris.
Okay. Madam Mayor, did, am I?
I said Chris, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I do have some items that I, I need consensus from, or looking for consensus from my colleagues on. Um, we talked a little bit at, at a recent meeting about the problems of on-street parking with the mid um, that I think we all recognize has become an issue or has been since early on. And uh, we mentioned that part of that might have related to the twenty-five percent reduction in minimum parking requirements because they have some shops in the front. Um, I would like to get uh agreement from my colleagues that we bring back this twenty-five percent reduction for discussion. Um, yeah, well, actually, I'd, I'd like us to m- make it a voting matter where we look at some other options of doing this, or at least some specifications that make it clear why there would be a justification for the reduced parking. For instance, with the mid, you have, I don't know, maybe two hundred apartments and you have three or four stores. It's not clear to me, maybe it's clear to others, why having some stores means that the apartments don't need as much parking. Um, so I think I'd like to ask for consensus from my colleagues that staff bring that item back. I think it's twenty-four something or other, something or other um, in our code for us to, to revisit that and decide, you know, is this policy working in our favor?
I, I completely agree with you. Um, and I heard about the mid, like the, if you rent there, the first parking, you get a parking space, but you have to pay for the second parking space, which is why I think people are parking on the street rather than paying for the parking space, which I don't know if that was part of the deal when the mid was approved. Um, but I find that sort of counterproductive to the, to looking at the situation that we have on Sixteenth and Seventeenth Avenue South. And I, you know, we can't go back to the mid and say, now you've gotta add parking, but I, I have never felt comfortable with this reduced parking. I mean, I know we all wanna you know, mobility is an issue, but people have cars and it's, it's created a problem. So I, I completely agree with you about that. Um, so we can bring that back. Um, or I, actually, thi- this is a thing, and this is directed to William. Is that something that is written in our like LDRs or comp plan? That we have to do that sort of reduction, or is that, can we do that on a case-by-case basis when a, when a project comes to us?
Okay, William Waters, as it stands now under the parking provision, any mixed-use project um, is entitled to a twenty-five percent overall reduction in the required parking. Please keep in mind that the parking on the street adjacent to the property in question can count those parking spaces toward their required onsite parking provision. In addition, a project cannot be given um a reduction to the point where it does not have at least one parking space per unit. The actual management of an apartment complex, once it's open, is beyond the control of the LDRs. Um, and that's the, been the biggest issue with the mid, because I, I get calls about it as well. And a person renting a two-bedroom unit expecting to have access to five parking spaces is unrealistic, and I do not have a means to provide that, so I've been giving those people the numbers of the management office as well as the developers. I'm like, you guys need to do a better job of being a full disclosure to your tenants that um, they're not gonna have access to five parking spaces. What's also exacerbated the problem on Seventeenth Avenue North is the construction of Deco Green, because many spaces are taken up for the majority of the day by people working um on that project, which is soon to be open itself, hopefully in the next two or three months. And I, I hope and I expect the issue will get a little bit better uh, once all those contractors and all that staging is gone, that's taking up spaces on Seventeenth.
But we're still gonna have the same problem. We gave, they got the twenty-five reduction, percent reduction as well, correct?
Yes.
So we're gonna have
Yeah. We're gonna have the same problem there.
So no, I, I completely, I, Chris, I, I completely agree with you. I think that we should. Ronaldo, has he had his hand up on this?
I do too.
Yeah. Okay, I see.
Um, I, I wouldn't necessarily agree to getting rid of a parking reduction, but I think there's other opt, because I think there's other ways to resolve it. Um, like the way that our on-street parking is calculated, maybe there's a way we can address it through that, like maybe on-street parking counts as half a space or something like that.
I don't think it should count at all.
Yeah, that's true. Uh, I think that's uh, and you know, the, the problem with the mid, and I, I use that Cube Smart for uh, some business stuff and, and you know, I, and I've, we've been successful in the past where I've talked into, you know, keep in mind, our, our parking division does have enforcement throughout the whole city, and this was back during the Larry Lightfoot days. I know he had sent uh enforcement over there, because when you look at the parking, it's a mess. People are, are blocking intersection uh, like drive the, the in and out of the storage facility. They're parked right up to the stop sign or parking facing the wrong direction. So maybe a, a first ask is to get enforcement out there for these parking violations. And yeah, I definitely wanna revisit the, our parking regulations. If only because this has been such a top question from the community, especially in regards to like W Moda and other developments that you know, there's still a lot of, I think, misunderstanding on how parking is calculated and, and what our regulations even are, you know, and uh, I think we should definitely, we, we really need to revisit it. I like the idea of not counting on-street parking for the reduction. I think that's
I think that's crazy. That, that's where your guests are, when they come to visit you.
Yeah.
Mimi?
Cause it does, cause generally, you know, a redu, a parking reduction is great for, you know, an appropriate mixed-use development that is taking advantage of things like public transit and like, you know, getting people out of cars, like you, you generally don't wanna get rid of it, so. Um, those are my thoughts. Looking forward to that discussion.
Thank you. Mimi?
So absolutely, I mean, I believe at the last two commission meetings, I've asked for somebody to bring forward the um parking regulations so that we can discuss these. Um, the other thing is, and Ronaldo said something about parking enforcement, according to Jamie, and Jamie, I, I believe this is what you told me, and if it isn't, please correct me. The parking division does not enforce citywide. They do downtown unless something is reported. So it's not like they go out and drive around and um find all the people that are, have their trailers unattached to their cars. They're parking the wrong way. They don't have license plates. They've got, you know, their RVs. They're not doing that. I think it's awful that they're not, but I don't believe that they are. So yes, enforcement is very important, and we're not doing it. So I also agree that no parking on the street should be counted, and I think we should come back and look at it and, and you know, the least amount of restriction, the least amount of reduction in parking legally possible is what I would be voting for, because this is getting ridiculous.
I mean, people have cars, you know, maybe in fifty years it'll be different with trams and stuff, but right now, people have cars, and if there's two people living someplace, there's two people, generally speaking.
Right. And I mean, with the Bohemian, with the, the Bohemians are the perfect example. The people that live in the Bohemian, they have, they have rent. And if they wanna park there, they have to spend another hundred dollars a month. So they don't, and then they park on the street. So I, I mean, that's ridiculous, and there's nothing we can do, as William said, because we don't run the Bohemian, but that's, they, they should raise the rent a hundred dollars and make them park in the garage.
Right.
You know, and a lot of that is management, and I don't know how you can control that, but it's also what makes me the most mad. It's taking advantage of the city, you know, that, which you're gonna find, as you get to know me, it doesn't matter who's doing it. If somebody's doing it, I'm gonna get mad.
Um,
That's what I got.
Uh, as just a side note to that, the wave-finding signs for the, you know, when you're coming Lake Avenue, how do I know the Bohemian? What, what's happening with the signs?
So I talked to uh Chris Dobros over the CRA, because the other one's doing the wave-finding signage. I know he was in the process of, he's supposed to send over the drafts for um Lake and Lasurn, um, leading the Bohemian. And uh, there was one other location.
Spillway, spillway, spillway.
Oh yeah, the spillway off of um, off of federal up there. Um, so I did speak with him about that, so he is working on that currently. But I'll have to get a update from him.
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
I, I was not done?
No, I know, we're just finishing up this conversation about parking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I, if I can address what Mia had mentioned, Commissioner May. Um, so yeah, so parking does uh, they uh enforce on downtown corridor as well up, is up at the beach. Um, but they do not enforce citywide. Um, so if there are parking issues, that usually falls either on a public works, if it's a right-of-way issue, or uh, if it's something on a property, then it uh, it would be um, uh, code. If they're parking like an RV, like on the, on the front yard or something like that, that'd be code compliant, so if it's on their private property. We just do not have the staffing levels to, to police the entire city. Um, in our parking division. It's just not, it's just really possible.
I just look at the clock and I just, if, um,
Yeah, I'd like
But wait, 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 Chris, Chris, please. We also have other people that have not had any chance, so let's do a quick round and come back to you if we have time.
N- n- no ma'am, I had my hand up first thing at this meeting and you let
And you, yeah, and you brought one thing up, and now I think Sarah has something she would
I just wanna add to what
Sarah brought up three things. Can I please bring them up?
Chris, I'm trying to give my opinion on what you just asked. You want a consensus. Can I answer just like I gave you that option?
Please, quickly.
Thank you. So I also don't think that it's fair to the city that if we're giving a pass and giving let's say the Bohemian and the mid, whoever, Joe Bob, a pass on parking that we're taking something, but yet then they're turning away and they're, they're charging their re, their renters. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's equitable. But in regards to, somebody had just mentioned the, what is that thing called? The storage area? We have a problem. There are homeless people living in that storage area, and the storage area is aware of it. So I don't know, since you brought this up, I don't know how we address that. But some of them have two and three units, and there are multiple people living in that storage unit right next to the Bohemian in the mid where the parking situation is. And some cars are parked there that have displaced individuals who are living in them as well. So I just, I wanna bring that to somebody's attention.
Sounds like PBSO.
Yeah, I would think. Um, okay, Chris, we'll do one more thing and then, Mimi, do your hand is up. Is that for a specific um item?
Uh, no, I can wait for Chris's last one.
Okay, I have
You only have ten more minutes.
Okay, um, yes. I have two discussion items that I would like added to the next agenda, not the fourth, but the eighteenth. Um, one of them is a discussion of the front, with staff of the revenue stream that we need to repay the loan for the parking garage. We need to understand under different scenarios, if we have paid parking, street parking downtown, if we don't have paid street parking. Um, we need to understand what that revenue stream looks like to make sure that we in fact have a means of repaying that. The other discussion item um that I'd like to have added is relates very much to this issue that we've just talked about with the mid and what uh Mr. Waters brought up of management. I would like a discussion where the staff works with W Moda and says, what is your parking management plan, a written plan that will be presented to the apartment dwellers? So that we know what that is, what they're told, just like what Mr. Waters says, well, we don't have no control over it. But if we're giving a parking reduction, which right now we are, twenty-five percent, we need to see what is the written plan that will be given to residents, so they understand what their options are upfront. And I think we should discuss making that written plan part of our overall agreement. Because we're giving them city resources for parking. Um, we need to understand what their part of it will be. So those are my two items, revenue stream for the parking garage. And uh, well, three items, the, 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 bring staff, bring something back on the 25% reduction. Um, and then two discussion items, one on the parking management plan for W Moda and the revenue stream. Thank you. I'd like some consensus on that.
Um, I don't know that we have enough to, to do it for the 18th. Uh, I, I was almost thinking, because there are some questions about W Moda, maybe at some point we would, don't kill me, don't hate, don't hate me, if we might want to have a workshop about, just in general, you know, questions that are coming up about W Moda. And include that in it.
That, that, that's fine. Uh, I've actually asked, I think that's a good idea. I've asked for, been asking for a long time from number, numbers so that the public can understand, we don't have arguments about are the numbers right or the numbers wrong. Um, specifically, I asked for the total of public funds that would be going to all the various pieces of the W Moda project. A simple spreadsheet that adds them up, tells where they're coming from, what they're going to. Um, there should be numbers on the cost of the L and M 11 properties so that we all agree, these are the numbers. It'd be nice to have recent appraisals so we know if the, you know, if the prices uh, have changed because they've gone up. And we definitely need numbers on the parking garage. How many parking spots are we losing? How many are committed to W Moda Museum? How many will be committed or rented to the apartment building? What are the actual numbers? These are, are things that.
Sure.
You know, we need to have these numbers as soon as possible because we're voting on things with no information.
Well, let's have, we all got copies of the proposed, you know, agreements that we just got last week to go over. Um, Ronaldo, do you have a, um, comment on that? Because I think we should have a workshop.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of the workshop. Um, you know, the people can direct their tomatoes towards you, but uh, I, I like that idea. I think there's a lot of questions and discussion that needs to be happened. Uh, Commissioner McVoy brings up a great point. We do need those numbers um, to make better decisions, basically. And I, this kind of segues from the previous discussion, you know, there is a thought that, well, there's little that we can do in regards to parking management of some of these projects, um, like the mid and Bohemian. And that's not entirely true. I mean, we didn't have, like, we as in this commission didn't have, I say, in the Bohemian garage agreement, but when it comes to the parking agreement, I mean, those are reasonable things that we can work into the parking agreement. And I think, you know, for W Moda, there's a lot of things that we have learned from the Bohemian garage that if we're going to go down this path, I think it's totally reasonable to look at what are some of these options, what are some of these asks and um, consideration that needs to be included in our agreement with them. So I.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. Oh yeah, I've gone, gone, gone through the draft and I'm going through it. It's, it's, it's a hefty one for sure.
It's a big one. And um, my understanding is that the past couple of days, there have been a couple changes to it. So I think there's going to be an updated one coming up. Um, which is good. So, so we could, if we could get a workshop, you know, the closest workshop, I hate to ask, but Jamie and.
Yeah, I'll get with the clerk and look at, look at calendars and look at dates and everything. And I will say that uh, I know our finance director was putting uh, updating based on agreements and everything else, um, everything yesterday. And he had reached out to Joan at the CRA because obviously when we're looking at the overall cost for all the different components, it's not just city. So we need to make sure before we push that out to everyone that the CRA numbers are correct because we obviously don't handle their accounting and their stuff. So we, uh, we're just waiting on uh, to get back from Joan, all of their numbers to make sure everything is correct in the spreadsheet and then we can push that out. Um, and then obviously uh, we'll have some other agreements coming forward. I believe possibly on the uh, the 18th meeting. Um, that we'll be pushing out and that'll be, you know, for your consideration or modification to those agreements or approval or denial, or whatever happens to be. But uh, we did get to a point yesterday where um, we have basically taken care of all the business terms. Um, so we're ready to actually bring that forward to all of you guys to actually see if that's something you're, you're interested in or not.
Okay. I have one real quick thing. Sarah, there was a committee that you were on the IPAC committee, the I, the I, the county mobility that you're, not, you don't want to do it, you, you weren't doing it and I.
Yeah, I was never part of it. No ma'am.
It's for somehow your name got in there. So we need to pick someone to be on this committee. Um, and so let's put that on the 18th. I'm filling in, or Jamie, you know what I'm talking about, right? The IPAC committee.
Yes, yes.
What's it called? What does it stand for?
Oh God, it's an acronym for something about mobility. It's about, right? Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh yeah, it's, it's the uh, mobility, we're, um, it's a mobility.
It's a countywide mobility group. If anybody wants to do it, I'd be delighted, but if, if necessary, I would do it. So could we put that on the 18th, just to appoint somebody as the representative?
Yeah, I don't mind, I don't mind looking to do something like that. I'd like to get more involved, but I'd like to know what it stands for before I sign up for it.
Yeah, I'll give Melissa.
You can hear my concise explanation of it, you know, so.
Thank you, thank you, Betty.
One does one's best. So um.
We didn't really get consensus response to the three items I had to put on the 18th agenda. Um, could we get that?
Uh, well, I.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Can we have consensus to put it on a future meeting because the 18th already has a lot on it. I don't know how much we could fit on there, how much more we could fit on there and how long it will take to get the backup. So we have the appropriate backup.
All right. Okay, um, take care, Mimi. Um, Chris, your three things were, um.
Parking management plan for W Moda that we.
Right, we're gonna do a workshop.
Uh, yeah, but that needs to be talked about before we sign anything with the parking garage and revenue stream to repay the parking garage loan. Those are both time sensitive if we're going to be looking at um, approval of a contract. So we need to. And then the minimum 25% might also be relevant to that, um, since we have, that's currently in the plan and I, doesn't seem like any of us are very much in agreement with it.
Well. I'd rather pour it on to workshop. Uh, Mimi's gone, um. I think it's a lot to ask, but you're talking about what, what agenda with them because.
It could be all part of the workshop so the community can hear everything all together and have to be at three or four different meetings personally.
Right, right. And I, we just heard that the 18th is a very packed agenda apparently.
Uh, it, it's certainly up to my colleagues. I only get one vote, but I'm pointing out that all these items are directly germane to us voting on a parking garage agreement. So it seems to me, it will be helpful to have them, some way of having a discussion of what we, you know, what we're doing with it.
Which, nothing, I'm sorry, nothing prevents us from, uh, that's an old dog. Um. Nothing prevents us from individually getting those figures as well. So Ronaldo, sorry about that.
I mean, I'll say that, that information would certainly be helpful in that meeting to make that decision. And if the answer to what's being requested is we don't have those numbers, then maybe, you know, that also needs to be clear, but if available, I, I certainly would like to have that information myself.
Whether we put it on an agenda or not, well, I think staff can certainly furnish us with um, some of those figures.
Well, maybe it doesn't have to be its own agenda item. I mean, maybe that information can be a part of what is already going to be presented to us and what we'll be voting on because it's related. So.
So let's, let's look to Jamie and um, uh, finance for that information.
Yeah.
So, so there's general agreement that I can ask staff to add some things to the backup.
No, you're not going to ask staff. Jamie's going to ask staff what, to get those figures together. We don't ask staff to do stuff.
By asking, by asking staff, I mean, ask Jamie. But I, do I have support that I can put, give him a list that summarizes what we've talked about here? Of what information we would like to have for the, when the parking agreement is brought.
My point, isn't most of that information been provided, I mean, not in a list way, but I mean, the, I think a lot of the information's been provided to us, if I'm not wrong, if I'm not mistaken. Am I wrong? Jamie, am I wrong?
Yes, we, we obviously, uh, it's, it's been prevented, uh, presented in different, uh, different meetings, um, in different formats. I think what he's asking for is just consolidate all the information that's already out there.
And does, does staff have time to do that?
Are we talking about for the 18th meeting or what, what are we talking about?
No, we can't do the 18th. The, we the next meeting in April.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my main question is when, when do we need to have all this compiled? And because what we were doing for, what I saw Yannick doing yesterday, we're also pulling um, the uh, the 2024 county information for all the different properties involved as well. Um, so it's just kind of compiling all this data together.
So then I would say the first meeting in April.
I would, I would, my request would be that before, whenever the parking agreement is brought to us, we need to have prior to that as part of the backup, the um, numbers on a clear, single-page layout of parking spaces. Who gets what, what is committed, who's paying for what? A clear description of the revenue streams under different scenarios, because we have not decided those scenarios, what kind of parking plan. A clear written management plan for what the W Moda people will tell their apartment people as part of their contract. And a clear, what are we doing with the 25% minimum? Are we going ahead with that? And is there really any shared space between the museum and the apartment building? Because I don't see that there is. I see stuff written that says there is no shared parking, in which case I don't see what the justification for the 25% reduction is. So all of that is germane to the parking agreement. I don't know when the parking agreement will come to us, but this information needs to be available to us as part of the backup with the two-week lead time for that discussion. I don't think it's responsible.
And I'm not arguing, I'm just saying I think staff needs some, I mean, apparently the information is scattered in different places. I mean, it's, we can certainly ask to have it made more convenient and add anything that's not on there, but um, I don't think we can do it at the next meeting. Melissa, am I correct on that?
I, I didn't ask for it for the fourth necessarily.
Well, not the fourth.
I asked for it before the parking garage agreement is brought to us, that we have that all as backup.
Is that on the 18th, Melissa?
Is what on the 18th, Madam Mayor?
The agreement for the parking, the big agreement for the parking.
It is not, as of now, no.
Okay, all right. All right. So that should be, not be a problem. All right. So it is now, it's, we're a little over. Um, today, this afternoon, Richard, we'd lost a citizen, Richard Guercio passed away. And just a reminder, 2 o'clock today, there's a service at Del Lago and I think there's a gathering at the Beach Club afterwards. Um, and uh.
And where did you say the, the service was at?
Del Lago on South Lakeside, our little funeral home.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw it on Facebook. Um, so I think it's, I think that starts at two. And I'll be able to go to that, but then I have a client coming in, so I don't know if I'll be able to make the gathering later, but I'll, I'll do my best. So I hope to see a couple of you there. Um, he was an active member of our community. So with that.
I have a conflict also, but I'll try to get in at least a little bit.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, with that, I will do, I don't think we need a motion to stop in this. I think we just stop it. All right. Have a great weekend, everybody. See you on Tuesday and uh, oh, tomorrow night is the opening at Hatch of the Kimono Show. Um, they always have some great shows. So thank you very much, everyone, and uh, hope to see you around the town on the weekend. Take care.